We'll now call the meeting for the Garden Grove Housing Authority. Madam Clerk, could you please take row?
Commissioner Dalton?
Here.
Commissioner Doe?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Navarres?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Chair Broadwater?
Here.
Chair Winn?
Here.
We'll now go to the Item 1, Oral Communications. Any public comments? Okay, we have no cards, hearing none. We'll now go to the Item 1B, Commissioner's Comments. Do we have any comments from Commissioners?
No, that would only be if there was oral communications.
Okay, okay. We'll now move to Item 2, Consent Items.
Move the items.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Commissioner Doe? Councilmember Doe, I need you to...
Oh, I didn't do it?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no public hearings on calendar, no items for consideration. Any matters from Commissioners and Directors? Hearing, none. I'll now call for the adjournment of the Garden Grove Housing Authority. The next regular meeting of the Housing Authority will be held on Tuesday, June 22, 2010, at 6:30 PM in the Council Chamber.
I don't know what we're gonna do when he leaves.
Okay, I'd like to call a Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call row?
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Doe?
Here.
Councilmember Winn?
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here. We'll have the invocation by Keith Jones, the Public Works Director, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Winn. Okay, so here we have a presentation.
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Nile Barrett with OCTA will give a presentation on the West County Connector Project.
Thank you very much. Mayor Dalton and City Council. My name is Nile Barrett. I work with the Orange County Transportation Authority. I'm the project manager for the West County Connectors Project, and I'm happy to be here tonight to give you an overview of the project. I think we have it on our screens here. I'm not sure if you can see it. I'll just follow along. So, the West County Connectors Project is essentially the 22, Phase 2, and it will take the carpool lanes, or high occupancy vehicle lanes that exist today, on the 22, which terminate just east of Valley View Street. We're planning to construct new HOV connectors to take those HOV lanes from the 22 through the interchange with the 405, and constructing new lanes on the 405, and then connecting those two new lanes to the existing carpool lanes on the 605. So, we've broken the West County Connectors Project into two segments, and we have the east segment, which is again from just east of Valley View Street onto the 405 to approximately where Lamson Avenue is, and then the west segment, which is the 405-605 segment, takes us from just there at Lamson Avenue up onto the 605. The project's schedule, we have open bids for the east segment, and we hope to award contract before the end of this month, May 2010, and therefore, we'd like to see construction begin July 2010, and that's for the east segment. For the west segment, Caltrans have advertised the project, and we hope to open bids on July 1st, so we would see a contract, construction contract approval approximately August of 2010, with construction scheduled to begin approximately October of this year. The funding for the east segment is made up of $150 million in federal money, that's congestion mitigation and air quality dollars, and $50 million in American Recovery and Reinvestment Act dollars, and on the west segment, we have $200 million in Corridor Mobility Improvement Act money, and that is state Prop 1B dollars. So, that gives us a total budget of $400 million total for the whole project. The roles and responsibilities, OCTA oversaw the design of the project, and we're also providing construction management consultant support to Caltrans, and we're providing the community outreach during construction. Caltrans provided independent quality assurance during the design of the project, and they are now overseeing the Construction Contract Administration. And then briefly, just to show you where this is, this overhead is taken from approximately College Park East, looking back down the 405, and the idea here is to show you approximately where this new HOV connector bridge will go, which is again from the center of the 22 freeway through the interchange with the 405, and onto the 405 freeway. Now, today, we have two existing carpool lanes on the 405, one in each direction, so our project will widen the 405 to provide an additional two carpool lanes, that's two in each direction, and we're taking those carpool lanes up to the 605, and this slide shows you approximately where the new HOV connector bridge will be from the 405 to the 605, so that those two carpool lanes can then head on up to the 605 and connect with the existing carpool or HOV lanes on the 605. In widening the 405 bridge, unfortunately, we have to demolish a few bridges that currently span the 405, and there's one that spans the 22 freeway. The 7th Street Bridge, or the North 405-West 22 Connector, is one of those bridges, and because of the way it was built, which is at a skew here to the 405, and also, the existing bridge just has three columns and cross-section, which essentially means that we need to replace the bridge in approximately the same location as the bridge is today, which means to build a new bridge, we have to first demolish the old bridge in its entirety before we can construct a new bridge. Luckily, at Valley View Street, and also at Seal Beach Boulevard, we can do it in two halves. I'll get on to that in just a second, but this new bridge, as I say, it's gonna be quite a long bridge, very large foundations, and in order to construct this new bridge, the North 405-West 22 Connector will be closed for up to one year. We do have incentive, disincentives on this bridge whereby if the contractor comes in ahead of schedule, they're eligible for an incentive, and if they come in behind schedule, they're hit with a disincentive. On every project that we've used this on in Orange County, we've seen that the contractor has come in on time to meet the incentive clause in the contract, which means that we're hoping that this bridge can be completed in as little as 11 months. This shows the detour routes in place, and we've worked with all of the cities, including this one, to have city co-ops in place ahead of the beginning of construction, and it lays out, the co-ops, along with the traffic management plan that we have, lays out all of the detour routes that we'll have throughout the whole construction of the project. This slide here shows the detour routes just for the closure of the 7th Street Bridge, and as you can see, it takes anywhere from getting off at Westminster, coming up north on the 405, would be one detour route to get you into Long Beach that way, or, for example, you could get into Long Beach, you stay on the 405 and get off at Palo Verde, and you can actually get back on the 405 south to get west into 7th Street. So, just to point out, it's the North 405-West 22 Connector that will be closing. The South 405-West 22 Connector and the South 605-West 22 Connectors will remain open, and so that's always an alternate route for people who need to get into Long Beach. Valley View Street Bridge reconstruction, the good news there is that the existing bridge has more than three columns, and so literally, we can slice the bridge down the middle and reconstruct it in two halves, which means we don't have to close the bridge in its entirety during construction. However, when we cut the bridge in half and demolish and reconstruct one half at a time, we'll obviously have to reduce the lanes of traffic on the bridge, because we'll be down to approximately half the width of the existing bridge, and so the idea is to demolish the east half of the bridge first, and while we do that, we'll be shifting traffic onto the west half of the bridge, reconstruct the east half, shift traffic onto newly constructed the east half of the bridge, demolish the west half, reconstruct the west half, connect the two together, and we have a new bridge at Valley View Street. So, again, we have detour routes in place during construction of this new bridge. There may be some nighttime closures, for example, to remove, to demolish the existing bridge, or for some false work erection that needs to happen in order to construct a new bridge, but again, we have a traffic management plan and detour routes in place for just that. The Seal Beach Boulevard Bridge is essentially the same concept whereby we'll be demolishing east and west in two halves and rebuilding, and again, we won't have to close the Seal Beach Boulevard Bridge. One of the things we've worked hard on is with the emergency services coordination, and we've been in constant touch, and we've had numerous meetings with all of the emergency services in this vicinity, and we're making sure that they're coordinating, communicating with each other, and us to implement as best possible any kind of assistance plans that they can during construction of the West County Connectors Project, and obviously during detour routes or potential lane reductions on bridges. And so, we've implemented a certain amount of things as part of the contract, and we're hopeful also that the emergency services will follow through, and we'll be meeting with them throughout to ensure continued cooperation and coordination throughout the construction of the project. Briefly, one of the things that we have on here, you can see that the Seal Beach Boulevard Bridge, we're able to restripe the center of it during construction. Unfortunately, not the Valley View Bridge, but part of the reason for just the Seal Beach Boulevard Bridge is because of the proximity of Leisure World to the south and the existing medical facilities up in Cattella, so that was one thing that we've worked hard to try to get done just at Seal Beach Boulevard. The closures, again, briefly, I mentioned the 7th Street Bridge for up to 12 months. The East 22-North 405 Bridge will be closed for 10 months. Now, this bridge isn't as important a closure, frankly, we feel, as a 7th Street Bridge, because motorists have numerous alternates to get north on the 405 going out of Long Beach, so there's a number of surface streets to get you onto the 405, not so many if you're coming north on the 405 if you want to get into Long Beach. Also, we have a couple of two-week closures, the South 605, South 405, and the East 22, South 405. Those closures, we looked at, do we do it nighttime, do we do it weekends, and we figured it's just best to get the contractor in and out as quickly as possible to reduce the overall schedule, and really, what we're doing there is we're just tying in new roadway. As it's being constructed, we have to tie it into the new freeway, which we're widening in order to construct our new HOV lanes. This slide just gives an overall schedule of the construction sequencing, and on the north side of the slide, we have the east segment, on the south side, or on the lower half of the slide, we've got the west segment. And briefly, just to point out that the Valley View Street Bridge, which is the two top blue slides that you see, that bridge will be constructed and open to traffic before any work begins on the Seal Beach Boulevard Bridge, which are the bottom two slides on the lower half of this slide here, the bottom two bars, I should say, and also the 7th Street Bridge, which is about in the middle, which is hatched out because it's a bridge closure, that bridge will also be constructed and open to traffic before any work begins on the Seal Beach Boulevard Bridge as well. So, we've been aware that we need to ensure that we're giving people as much choice as possible, and that we don't just go out and demolish bridges or reduce lanes of traffic wherever we can, and we have to phase it accordingly so as to give people alternates during construction of the project. Aesthetics, on the retaining walls for these HOV connectors, and instead of an earthen embankment, which is what you see sometimes with older ramps leading up to bridges, we have these vertical retaining walls, and part of the reason for that is to minimize the right-of-way takes. In fact, we've got very little to no right-of-way takes for the whole project. On the sides of these walls, we do have these motifs, and on the east segment, we've got the "Eager Takes Flight" motif in keeping with the Bolsochika Nature Reserve in the location. On the west end, we also have, it's called a Seals and Seaweed, which is a little closer to Seal Beach and a little closer to the ocean. Community relations, we've had numerous city council and traffic commission briefings such as this. We also have open houses, and in fact, we've another bunch of open houses coming up. We've one, the next one is this coming Thursday, May 27, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM here in Garden Grove at the Loyal Barker Elementary School on Springdale Street. That's from 6:00 to 8:00 this coming Thursday, so I'd welcome anyone and everybody to come along. It's essentially the same presentation as what I've given now, but we have an opportunity for questions and answers, and we kind of open the mic to anybody who has any questions at the end of our little show-and-tell for our open houses. And also, we've had numerous other meetings with various, for example, Cal State Long Beach, Boeing, even as far away as the Port of Long Beach, and many other organizations, as well as we have a website. I'll give you the address for that in just a second. We send out email alerts, anybody can sign up to get these email alerts. We've got media relations, we're sending 70,000 flyers out in the next week to everybody in the area of this project, and we have newspaper adverts coming up as well. So, again, just briefly, the open houses, we've, the next one, May 27 in Garden Grove, Rossmore, Long Beach, and then Westminster and Seal Beach in early June. And I have to thank Christina Byrne, our OCTA Community Relations Officer here, for doing such a great job on all of the outreach that we've done to date, and here's her phone number, email address, and also the website that I spoke about that describes the project, and it's a good idea if anybody has any questions on the project often to get onto the website, because we have a section on there that shows questions and answers, as well as an overview of the project, and a lot of times, you can come away with a lot more answers than you even had questions with to begin with. And that's it, concludes my presentation. Again, thank you very much to the council.
Thank you. Any question for Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Are the closures, all the lanes, or just part of the lanes?
On the freeway?
Yes.
Well, during, again, it's gonna be limited nighttime closures. We will have to close the 405, all the lanes, when we're taking down or putting up false work, but throughout the entire project, we plan to close no lanes, let's say, from Monday to Friday, from 9:00 to 5:00, no lanes will be closed. And also, just to throw in, OCTA has freeway service patrol program, which we're doubling during construction to ensure continuous service. This is like a towing service that we provide for people who break down, because there may be some reduction in the hard shoulders on the sides of the freeways, and we want to make sure that we keep traffic moving as best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Barrett, we appreciate it. Okay, now we'll go to oral communications for the council, the agency, and the sanitary district. Beatrice Jones.
Chance to speak first. I'm Beatrice Jones. I've got a cold, and I hope that I can get through this. I want to take this opportunity to, number one, thank the mayor, the council staff, for taking a forward step, a decision on your part, to, number one, I'm speaking to Item 6A, that you have done this on your own, and I wanted to say in advance that after many years of my educating the city and everyone on Juneteenth, I am so pleased to see that the city itself is taking, the initiative itself, to proclaim Juneteenth in 2010. And it was, it's been a process, a process of learning and sharing, requesting, getting answers, seeing the city participate. When Mayor Broadwater was the mayor, he came out to our meetings. Some of the past city council people came to the citywide recognitions of Juneteenth. Beautiful proclamations have been made. I'm proud of my city, and I'm proud of my staff, and I just wanted to say this up in front. The participation has been, like I said, not only locally with the proclamation, but county-wide, and I think our city is a very enviable city when we take a look at all of Orange County and its response to Juneteenth, because this is a state, official state holiday, and I'm so glad that our city is continuing to be forward in recognizing Juneteenth. So, that was all I wanted to say early.
Okay, Bea, I'm gonna, in consent item, we would issue a proclamation, but rather than have you wait because we're going to a couple of other things, I'm gonna go ahead and give you the proclamation now, but when we get to the consent items, it will all be legal, okay? But I do want to thank you very much, and you're right, you have really brought a lot of history and knowledge to a lot of people that weren't really sure what Juneteenth was, and you're everywhere in the community, so, I mean, I usually run into you somewhere or another, but I want to thank you very much for what you've done. And just a little bit of the proclamation. On June 19, 1865, two and a half years following President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation, Major General Gordon Granger led Union Army troops into Galveston, Texas, and issued the order to free the Black Africans enslaved in that state, and first celebrated 144 years ago, "Juneteenth was the first and oldest African-American holiday observance in the United States, and whereas in 1979, the state of Texas was the first to officially proclaim the 19th of June as a state holiday," Juneteenth. I might as well read the rest of them, and, because I think there are a lot of people that are learning something. And whereas 36 states now have some official recognition of Juneteenth, and are joining the 16-year-old National Recognition of Juneteenth Movement led by Dr. Myers, and whereas "Juneteenth is a celebration of the values that define Americans, including the love of freedom, passion for justice, and commitment to equality, and whereas the universal African flag and the Juneteenth flags will be hoisted with all glory at this year's festivities at the Fountain Valley Recreation and Sports Park on June 5th, and whereas honoring African-American history and commemorating the end of slavery in our nation ensures that the strength and sacrifices of those who came before us are not forgotten. All citizens will continue to reflect upon the absolute right to freedom, now protected for all American citizens, made complete by the passage of the 13th Constitutional Amendment, and whereas the city of Garden Grove joins the state of California in recognizing the historical significance of proclaiming the third Saturday in June as Juneteenth National Freedom Day. Now therefore be it resolved that the Garden Grove City Council does hereby proclaim June 19, 2010, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in Garden Grove." And I want to present this to you now, I don't want you to have to wait, because it might be another hour or so before we get back to it. Please come up here. Is there someone to take? Yes. I'll make sure we get a picture. Now, double trouble, even if you want, you can have a few more minutes up here if you want to make any other comments. Okay.
I thank you very much, and I'm gonna be very proud to make this available to the committee that's planning this year's countywide celebration. I don't know if any other city will have such a recognition, but Garden Grove certainly will, and that will be on, in Fountain Valley this year, so we're in a new city for the Juneteenth celebration. But I'm hoping that something I haven't had an opportunity to do for this body is to actually share with you the Juneteenth flag, and I have to leave the podium for a moment, and I'll need a hand.
Go ahead.
This one's sold, it belongs to somebody, and I'm thinking out of the box. The flag was designed by an, it was designed by an Army veteran in Boston, 1979, so the flag itself has been around for quite a while. And this is the Juneteenth flag. And you see, it's red, white, and blue, there's no black on the flag, and what it shows is actually the star representing those ancestors in Texas, and you see that strong star going through this horizon of our colors. It's a great long story that goes with it, I can get me with, that's quick and dirty. And the flag and its history is always available to me, and it will be also at the Juneteenth event also, so that you can actually purchase your own flag and appreciate that. If you don't have the Juneteenth flag for Juneteenth, you can, it is always correct to fly our colors, because this is what we're recognizing, our opportunity for this flag to have meaning to all African-American people in America. And it's also correct to fly what's sometimes called the Universal African Flag or the Liberation Flag, which represents all African-descended people, and it's a symbol of unity, red for the blood, black for the people, and green for the land. So, you have a choice of three flags to fly on the 19th of June. So, please make certain that you share this piece of history with not only your family, but your community, because it took all of us to make June 19th happen. It didn't happen by an individual people or an individual group of people. It took Americans working for the concept of what America stands for to make Juneteenth happen, and it has to be celebrated, and unfortunately, not enough Black people know the importance of this very significant day. So, I'm glad that Garden Grove is making that knowledge open and available to all Americans. And remember, the month of June not only has Juneteenth in it, but it also has Flag Day, Honor America Month, so I'll be back to remind you of those also. But plan to take the 5th of June and come out and learn a little bit more about American history from an African-American perspective, and I thank you again, city, for the proclamation and the important, understanding the importance of the history of all of its citizens.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and pull 6A up now, a consent item, declaring June 19, 2010 as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, and I'll move that, and if I have a second? Second. Okay, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
So, now it's legal before you leave. Okay, thank you. Tia Christian.
Good evening, everyone, council members, mayor. Good evening. I wanted to take the time to thank you for the proclamation and declaring June 19th a holiday for the city of Garden Grove, for the, I'm sorry, Juneteenth and the celebration of African-American slavery. So I want to take time to thank you. I serve on the committee, Juneteenth Committee this year, and I wanted to take time to come out to invite the council members and the mayor of Garden Grove to come out and join the celebration with us, participate, as well as the citizens in the community of Garden Grove. Also, I want you to bring your family and friends out and just to come out and celebrate and enjoy the celebration, just kind of see what it's all about, so we get the opportunity to fellowship together. So I want to thank Ms. Jones for her presentation as well, and also want to thank the city of Garden Grove for declaring June 19th a holiday in their city. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Next Monday is Memorial Day. While we enjoy the strawberry festival and the family barbecues, I hope we all remember what this day is really about. And to take a moment and think about all the American men and women who have died over the centuries to keep our country free. There are some who apologize for our success. And there are people in countries around the world today that enjoy the freedom to make bad choices. They thumb their noses at us, call us self-centered, self-indulgent, and arrogant. Perhaps we should apologize for Chateau Thierry and Bella Wood. Bransio and Normandy and Bastogne. For Guadalcanal and Iwo Jima. And Pusan and the Chosen Reservoir. Because of those events, people around the world have more freedom than they had before. I'd like to tell you a story. You're a 19-year-old kid, and you're critically wounded and dying in the jungle somewhere in the central highlands of Vietnam. It's November 11th, 1967. Landing zone X-ray. Your unit is outnumbered eight to one, and the enemy fire is so intense from 100 yards away that your commanding officer has ordered the medevac helicopters to stop coming in. You're lying there listening to the enemy machine guns, and you know you're not getting out. Your family is halfway around the world, 12,000 miles away, and you'll never see them again. As the world starts to fade in and out, you know this is the day. Then over the machine gun noise, you faintly hear that sound of a helicopter. You look up to see a Huey coming in, but it doesn't seem real because no medevac markings are on it. Captain Ed Freeman is coming in for you. He's not medevac, so it's not his job, but he heard the radio call and decided he's flying his Huey down into the machine gun fire anyway. Even after the medevacs were ordered not to come, he's coming in. And he drops it in and sits there in the machine gun fire as they load three of you at a time onboard. Then he flies you up and out through the gunfire to the doctors and nurses and safety. And he kept coming back 13 more times until all the wounded were out. No one knew until the mission was over that the captain had been hit four times in the legs and left arm. He took 29 of you and your buddies out that day. Some would not have made it without the captain and his Huey. Medal of Honor recipient, Captain Ed Freeman, United States Air Force, died last Wednesday at the age of 70 in Boise, Idaho. Next Monday, let us pause for a moment amid our celebrations to think of all of our heroes, past and present, who risked their lives so that we may celebrate and honor them. Yes, we are proud that we live in the freest country in the history of mankind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and citizens. I had some items I wanted to discuss tonight, but I'm not going to discuss them. I'm gonna bring up some cheery news. Mr. Mitchell said, there's always a possibility for death in a community experiencing the latest earthquake. Reminder of what may or could happen to a large community is ours. As you know, I spent virtually the last four years with an impeccable record on coming to city council meetings. I missed the last few months. I participated in a CERT program. And for the citizens that don't know about this program, it's a great program. It's a civilian emergency response team. You work alongside the fire department and emergency management teams, not only in the city, but it could expand into county, state, and federal. Some of our Garden Grove CERT members were in New Orleans after Katrina, the wildfires that we had here, I believe, two years ago. But it's a great course. You learn first aid, you learn rescue techniques, fire extinguishing techniques, radio communication, directing traffic, anything that may be needed and requested by our local fire departments. The next class is coming up in August, and I encourage citizens to really take advantage of these programs. It is a FEMA-backed program. It's been around since 1985. And you meet a heck of a lot of nice people, you have a lot of fun, you get outside, it's enjoyable, it's educational. And that's about all I'd like to speak about tonight, and I hope that the citizens will look into this course. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Evening, Mayor, council members, staff. My name's Tony Flores. What I have to say seems a bit trivial now compared to what Mr. Mitchell had to say, and I do agree with him on our recognition of our veterans, so pardon me, this is gonna seem a little bit boring compared to that. Any case, I want to talk about our new trash rate that's coming up because of the county raising their rates, they're passing it on to us. I'd like to also thank Mr. Jones, a very patient man, Keith Jones, a very patient man and a man who will listen to other suggestions when it comes to our contracts and what's gonna be best for the citizens of Garden Grove. The good news is, it seems that according to the annual report, the California Integrated Waste Management Board, 2008, the most recent report, we're doing great. We're diverting nearly 60% of our trash away from landfills, nearly 60%. But yet, the county is gonna go ahead and raise our landfill fee 22 bucks to $29.95. That's over 36%. Even though we're doing great, according to the report here, some of you may or may not have that, we're doing fine. They're gonna raise our rates anyway. Okay, fine, they must be looking for dollars too, and I can understand that, but they're hitting us pretty heavy with it. And I understand that their contract was from 97 to 2007. Last three years, they haven't been watching it, now they want to get the money from the rest of the folks in the county, the rest of the cities, even though we're diverting away all of our, more than 50% of our trash and landfill, et cetera. Having said that, I looked at our contract, actually, I didn't read all 96 pages of it, I just read Mr. Jones's synopsis dated today. And I understand what he is talking about when it comes to AB 939. It's in there. One of the good things, of course, that's in the contract is that we're gonna be indemnified of our obligations and guarantees, reference AB 939. One of the things that I would suggest and maybe caution the council and our staff is that we might want to look at SB 1016, that's the pounds per person per day. And that came from my conversation with the manager of the Orange County Waste and Recycling Program, Ms. Knapp. She said that really AB 939 is just part of how we break down our trash and our reportables to the state. So I'm suggesting that we also put in there SB 1016, so that would help us, we'd be held harmless in the event that we don't make that. Just as we've done here with AB 939, we might want to slip in 1016 along with that. Also, too, our recyclables, even though we're giving our California redemption value dollars back to our trash hauler, when I did a presentation in May of 2008, I had asked our trash hauler, Garden Grove Disposal, how much money we were making in recyclables. Nobody could answer me. And I asked a few folks, but it wasn't until I met with Mr. Jones last week, two years later, that he gave me kind of an answer as far as where the dollars are at. But I believe we should also make that transparent in this new contract, so we all know what we're doing with the dollars and where they're going. Right now, in the economy, the way the economy is, not all of the trash is making it anyway, which was part of SB 1016. That was really put together for economically depressed areas in certain cities to make it a little more even, to balance out with the AB 939 mandates. But we still want to bring that up, because if in fact our economy does start to move up, we could get hit with that SB 1016, and more dollars are gonna be taken out of all of our pockets. So any case, I'm available for questions, and I want to, again, thank Mr. Jones for his time that he spent with me, and we went back and forth on this. Any case, if anybody else has any questions, please give me a call. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I'm not sure, I can't read a name on this card. It's a yellow Planning Commission card, and it looks like it's a JPF or JP, JPF III?
Yeah.
Is that you?
Yeah.
Well, why don't you come on up here now? Jimmy Freeman, okay.
I don't know who I am. Good evening. I'd like to say some few words, but I know it's not a threat. But I was over at West Haven Park, right?
Mm-hmm.
Then, when I found out, something is missing. And I said, wait a minute, what's going on here? Something is missing. Like, the ceiling of a roof is gone. And then I said, wait a minute, something else is wrong. Where's the walls? Then when I walked there the other night, I looked through, and there's some graffiti right on the side of the wall, because yesterday, when I walked down, there was no graffiti. But there's a few new words I've never seen before. And I said, wait a minute, where did this come from? And what's they gonna catch these guys? And also, when I was riding my bike a couple of days ago, there was a chunk hole that's about that thick, and one of them almost got me. And I have it with it right here. Here's the proof right here.
Okay, where'd you get that at, Jimmy?
In my area.
Okay.
Right there.
Why don't you leave it on the desk by the clerk, and I'll take care of it.
There's a lot of chunk holes, and there's a lot of loose rocks, almost like that size, but a little bit bigger, much bigger. And I said, somebody gotta patch that up before somebody gets a little damage on it, before somebody ruined the tires, somebody ruined this and that.
Is that over on Jacqueline?
Uh-huh.
Okay, I'll let them know, okay, Jim?
And also, there's one over in Chapman and West, and one over on Chapman and Euclid.
Okay. All right, thank you for letting us know, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any other cards, I'm gonna close oral communications.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to ask if you would please adjourn the meeting.
I already have it written down, Charles. Okay, anybody want to make any comments, or we move on? Okay, I'll recess the council, and we'll go to the agency. Okay, at this time, we'll open up the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development. We've had public input, there is, we had a closed session, that we had no closed session. Oral communications is done, and consent items, we have the minutes. Anybody like to make a motion for more minutes?
Move it.
Call for the vote. We have no public hearings, we have no items for consideration, matters from agency members and director. Anybody like to say anything about the agency? Hearing none, we will adjourn till June 8th at 5:30 PM. Okay, now we'll go to the sanitary district. Okay, we had a closed session item, but no reportable action. Okay, mine is missing the sheet, so...
You have minutes?
I thought we were gonna do this with nine.
Yeah, we'll do that with nine, so you have minutes.
Okay.
If anybody wants to make a...
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, 6A will be done with nine on the council, so any matters from any board members? Okay, we'll adjourn till the next meeting, Tuesday, June 22nd.
Well, no, you'll recess.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
So recess until the council...
We'll recess until we get to nine.
Correct.
Okay. Now we'll go back to the council. We'll do consent items, 6A already haven't been handled.
Yes, and I believe we're also going to pull 6K.
Okay.
That's not needed tonight, so you've recommended that items 6B through 6J be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested.
Move the item.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
Second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, under public hearings, I understand 7A was pulled.
That's correct.
Okay, under commission and committee members, we have a letter of resignation from Planning Commissioner Bruce Tran.
Yes.
Would you... I move we accept it with regrets. Yes.
Motion received, five yes votes.
And make sure a letter sent out thanking him for his service to the community. Okay, 9A.
9A is a resolution initiating a proceedings for the Main Street Assessment District, and Ann Cowe is here to make a presentation on this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on April, sorry. On April 27th, 2010, the council adopted Resolution 8973-10, which directed the engineer to prepare the required report under the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. You have before you the engineer's report that outlines the improvement and maintenance costs for upcoming fiscal year 2010-11 for the Main Street Assessment District Number One. The engineer's report, along with the attached resolution, is the next step towards the levying collection of the assessment from the property owners. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council approve the engineer's report for the Main Street Assessment District Number One, adopt the attached resolution which will meet the requirements under the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, declare intention to levying collective assessment for the maintenance for fiscal year 2010-11, and set a protest hearing regarding the assessment for June 22nd, 2010. This concludes my staff report, and staff is available to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for staff? Move the issue. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
9B.
Mr. Mayor, 9B is a considered amendment to the project list submitted to the California Department of Finance for funding under Prop 1B, and Bill Murray is here to give you a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, in January 2009, staff presented a list of streets for rehabilitation using funding from State Proposition 1B. Unfortunately, the funding was frozen, and these projects were deferred. Staff was notified by the state in February of this year that the funding was again available. Staff reviewed the project lists and made some revisions. Staff reviewed the project lists and made some revisions. Some of the projects were being handled by city crews, and we also found some more, some other projects on streets that were more heavily traveled, and so we added those to the list. The new list is Dale Street from Orangewood to Cotella, New Hope Street from Trast to Garden Grove, West Street from Garden Grove to Lamson, Knott from Chapman to the North City Limits, and Springdale from Chapman to the North City Limits. Staff estimates this work will cost right about the two-point-five million dollars, which is the amount available in the grant. Staff recommends that city council adopt this new list for submittal to the state, and we're estimating that work will begin in summer and be completed in a manner so as not to affect the traffic that much. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Is that money coming straight to us, or through some third channel?
It comes straight to us.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Move the issue.
Second.
Have motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, nine C, which will also be six A from the sanitary district calendar.
Correct. I'd like Keith Jones to make a staff report on this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, tonight, we're continuing where we left off on our study session of April thirteenth, and at that time, we gave an outline of upcoming sanitary district landfill increases, and as an alternative, doing a negotiated, restated, amended agreement with Garden Grove Disposal, our solid waste hauler. For the sake of the audience, and those that weren't at the study session, I'm going to take a brief moment here and talk a little bit about what's going on with the county waste disposal, and then get into where we finally arrived at for a restated and amended agreement with Garden Grove Disposal. So on our first slide here, we see that the county did pass the agreement in nineteen ninety-seven, it was a ten-year agreement, was done in response to the county bankruptcy to provide for a financial stability for the county and their disposals system. The agreement was between the county and the cities of the county, and required those cities to use their landfill. And because of that contractual obligation, and as a benefit to the cities, there was a rate established of twenty-two dollars per ton for the franchise haulers that used, that serviced those cities. And this rate was a ten-year rate again, but in two thousand and seven, they hadn't arrived at a new agreement, so the rate was, or the agreement was extended another three years. And in two thousand and nine, the county and the City Managers Association negotiated a new rate, which will go into effect July first, twenty-ten, and it changes the amount of the landfill rate per ton from twenty-two dollars per ton to twenty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents per ton. Again, it becomes effective July first, twenty-ten, and under our current contract with our hauler, Garden Grove Disposal, the landfill is a rate pass-through adjustment and requires a rate increase. And as you recall, I gave this report again on April thirteenth during our study session, and let the council know that the staff had been entertaining the idea with Garden Grove Disposal of doing a renegotiation. A little background on Garden Grove Disposal, they've been a good partner with the city and sanitary district. They've had various agreements, starting in nineteen eighty-nine, and an amended one in nineteen ninety that included our recycling elements. And again, amended in nineteen ninety-five to include a green waste program, and the final restated agreement was in nineteen ninety-nine. This current agreement runs till April of twenty-fourteen, so there are four years existing, left on the existing contract, and Garden Grove Disposal is under no obligation to negotiate a new contract. They could let this run out till twenty-fourteen, but they recognize that perhaps now is the right time to do this, as well as we do, and so we have proceeded with this negotiation process, working closely with the city attorney's office. A little background on why we think this is the right time. In two thousand and four, the city hired the firm known as Hilton Farncoff and Hobson, or HF and H, to do a study to assess where our current disposal agreement ranked with a so-called state-of-the-art agreement that HF and H was dealing with. It showed that the Garden Grove Sanitary District's agreement was deficient in many areas compared to some of our constituents and other agencies. And those areas were, some agencies were receiving higher franchise fees, and again, as was mentioned earlier tonight, AB nine thirty-nine indemnification that would protect the city from fines, and if those regulations were not met. Free city facility trash service, e-waste collection, and so on and so on. And so, at that time in two thousand and four, we didn't take any action on that, but we did keep that report by HF and H always ready to compare to other contracts that would come out, whether that was in Anaheim or some other agency. And in March two thousand and nine, we were made aware that the city of Fullerton received a new contract, it was a ten-year contract, and it was with Republic Industries, which is also the same parent company that Garden Grove Disposal is under. And so, I got a copy of that, and staff reviewed it, and we discovered that it mirrored almost perfectly the recommendations that had been made earlier by HF and H. And this was something we were very interested in pursuing, because it established, again, a lot of those things that were deficient in our present contract. I want to talk now about what we have arrived at as a final agreement that sits before you tonight for your consideration for approval. The new proposed agreement is a fourteen-year agreement. In reality, it's ten years, given the consideration that Garden Grove Disposal still has four years remaining on the current contract. So it's four years plus a ten-year agreement, similar to what Fullerton had. Our biggest concern was this landfill rate increase, and how that would affect our residential customers. Not only that, in addition to that, the current contract calls for a annual CPI increase that is due to the hauler, and so that was also something that would have to be included this year. So that total landfill pass-through to the customers was about ninety-five cents per customer, and the CPI increase, which was about thirty cents per customer, for a total of dollar twenty-five cents. And so part of this new agreement is stipulation that Garden Grove Disposal would assume all of that cost for this current year of fiscal year ten, eleven. So that's a remaining rate of nineteen dollars and sixty-six cents, which is the current rate right now for our residential customers. So that would remain during this next fiscal year of ten, eleven. And it's a savings to our residential customers of approximately four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The next possible rate increase that Garden Grove Disposal would be due would be then July in twenty, July of twenty-eleven, which would be similar to what you already have enacted in your current contract, which is a CPI increase capped at five percent. We don't expect it at this time, but if the CPI was, say, six percent, Garden Grove Disposal would have to come back to the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board at that time and renegotiate and amend the contract. We anticipate that it'll be lower than that, and whatever it is, if it's similar to this year of one-point-seven-six, that's what the CPI would be increased to. So we feel good about that, that the rate mechanism for them is only a CPI increase, similar to what we have right now, and it's capped at five percent. Place that we struggled with was the commercial side and the increase to them. They were going to have to pick up the landfill rate increase, and also the CPI increase, and that is where, up until about a day ago, we had left it with Garden Grove Disposal. Staff had done their best to negotiate that. And it's my understanding that the mayor reached out to Garden Grove Disposal representatives and wanted them to do something for the commercial rates, and so Garden Grove Disposal, my understanding, has consented to pick up the CPI increase for the commercial three-cubic yard containers. Those are the typical containers you see at restaurants, the square, six-by-six, I think they are. That's significant, because that represents pretty much eighty percent of our commercial business. This helps out the smaller businesses by picking up that CPI. The burden of the landfill rate increase is just unpendable for Garden Grove Disposal to pick up that cost, but we are proud to report that they will be picking up the CPI for that. And so, as part of that, I'll be reading that into our staff recommendation.
Do you know how much that works out to?
That's about a hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-dollar savings to our commercial.
Actually, a hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-five.
There you go.
I negotiated it, so I know.
The, some of the points I want to go over briefly, where we will, why we think this is a benefit to renegotiate this time are, number one, in addition to the priority we had for picking up that cost for our residential customers and the CPI for some of the commercial, we would be upping our existing franchise fee from sort of a melded rate of five percent when you combine the eight-and-a-half percent for residential franchise fee currently and two-and-a-half percent for commercial. It's about a five percent melded rate. We would just be going to a strictly across-the-board proposed fee of seven-and-a-quarter percent. This would bring an additional four-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand dollars annually back to the city, and franchise fees are fees paid by the hauler to the city for the exclusive right to collect and dispose of solid waste. It comes out of the franchise hauler's pocket, if I can use that term. It's not a cost to our customers. So that's good news there, and again, that's an additional four-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand back to the city. In addition, the hauler has consented to pick up the city's facility trash collection. These are trash generated by city facilities, at city facilities or in projects that are out in the street where we're bringing back asphalt or concrete or dirt to be disposed of. Currently, we spend about three-hundred-thousand dollars of the general fund per year on that, and this would be included at no cost now, so Garden Grove Disposal would be picking up that additional savings that we would incur of three-hundred-thousand dollars. In addition to that, we're seeking an administrative cost reimbursement, adjusted annually to a CPI of about a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. This goes to administering the contract, just from the amount of staff time that takes to conducting audits to make sure that we're receiving all the revenue we're supposed to be receiving, that we're complying with AB nine thirty-nine, and checking on the, what our hauler is doing and reporting. So that's another savings to the district in that area. We have an additional amount being given back to the community. Currently, we receive forty-thousand dollars in community donations. Twenty thousand goes to the Garden Grove Community Foundation, and twenty thousand is for what's called in-kind service. In-kind service would be, for example, Boys and Girls Club holding an event and needing a three-cubic yard container, that would be donated for free upon request by them. So a lot of community service benefit from that. In addition, we're getting another twenty thousand dollars for a total of sixty thousand that would come back to the city, that could be used for a number of different events that are part of the community, and this could be anything from Christmas tree lighting to any other number of events that are held throughout the city. So that'll benefit us as well as the community. We'll continue to keep our discount for disabled, low, disabled and low-income residents. There's a fifteen percent discount eligible for residents, but they do have to qualify. There's a certain qualification period for that. But again, we're keeping that intact, and it's consistent with what other agencies do. We are adding a walkout service for people that need that and just can't handle the size or physical taking out of the can that, at no cost, that Garden Grove Disposal will respond to with that, and again, there's a qualification period, qualification for that. In addition, we're doing an extra bulky item pickup. Bulky items are items that, such as things that don't fit in trash cans, like water heaters or refrigerators, or those types of things, that on an annual basis, each resident is allowed two annual free pickups. We'll be increasing that by one pickup, so a total of three free pickups per year, and we still include our Christmas tree disposal, annual disposal, so that's really three additional, three bulky item pickups plus the Christmas pickup. One of the things we were deficient in was electronic waste, because back in nineteen ninety-nine, who thought of what electronic waste was and how you would dispose of that? Garden Grove Disposal will be picking that up as part of the bulky item pickup also, so that's something extra that's concurrent with other agencies. One of the items that you heard about tonight was the recycling and CRV payments. We did do a study on that as part of this negotiation. It's important to note that in nineteen ninety-nine, that last stated, reamended, restated agreement, the city relinquished its payments to the hauler for recyclables for, in return for a two-year residential rate freeze. The value of that freeze over those two years to the residents was approximately five-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars. Current value of recyclables are going, are way down, they currently go from, anywhere from eighty-thousand dollars to a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars annually, and we would typically, in the past, we split that fifty-fifty, so the amount coming back to the district and/or the city in recyclables is minimal. It would be, at a fifty percent split, it would be forty thousand to roughly sixty thousand dollars. So in upping the franchise fee, in taking up the costs for these landfill rate increases for our residential customers, we're seeing real value in that, a stable revenue source as compared to going after recyclables. But we do include in the agreement that in the year twenty-fourteen, we will be reviewing our income from recycling and CRV payments on a formal level. We'll naturally review that annually, but at that point, there is an opener in the agreement that we would sit down with Garden Grove Disposal to evaluate the cost sharing of the recyclables. And at that time, the city will evaluate similar agreements in place in Orange County, and make any necessary adjustments to the recycling revenue terms in order to bring city's recycling compensation in line with other Orange County cities. So not only did our residents receive a benefit back in nineteen ninety-two, or nineteen ninety-nine, excuse me, but we're getting another bite at the apple in twenty-fourteen to make sure that we are still receiving the value from that. So I think that's something we saw in the Fullerton contract, we like that, and we've incorporated it into ours as well. One of the highlights, too, is AB nine thirty-nine indemnification. If the city was not able to meet its AB nine thirty-nine indemnification of diverting fifty percent of its waste stream from the landfills, under the current contract, the city would be on the hook for that, for any types of fines or institution of new programs. Under the proposed contract, Garden Grove Disposal will be on the hook for that. And not only that, they would have to defend and pay any, defend any legal costs should we, should our non-compliance result in that, but also institute new programs at no cost to the city. We also have some minor other things in there, but they're still important. We have a recycling assistance that if any new grants come, or, sorry, recycling assistance, if any new grants come along, that we would benefit from their assistance in obtaining that. Also, if any new type of programs come along, such as, at some point, we could get into a Sharps recycling program, needles that currently we don't pick up, but the state could at some point require cities to do that, or... Or there could be a medical waste or medical prescription program that we would have to dispose of. There's language in the current contract that, without having to reopen this, provides a mechanism to enter negotiations with the hauler for that. And that was one of the areas that we were deficient in before. There was no mechanism to do that. We also have a public education upgrade into that in that we will have multilingual brochures, not only in English and Spanish as we currently have, but multilingual brochures both in Korean and Vietnamese. And more promotions at schools and community events to highlight the importance of our recycling programs. There's probably a few more things that I've missed, but again, in summary, this freezes residential rates through June 2011. Also, the commercial rate that I spoke of in regard to CPI for the three-cubic yard bins. It increases our franchise fees. It includes free city facility trash services, reimbursement for administrative costs, increases community and in-kind donations, enhances solid waste collection programs, provides AB 939 indemnification. And the net benefit and cost savings to residents and the franchise fee is about $1.5 million that we would be receiving in value from this contract. And again, it would be for a term of 14 years. Having said all that, staff is recommending that the Garden Grove Sanitary District approve the new 14-year contract with Republic Waste Services of Southern California, doing business as Garden Grove Disposal, with a change to include no CPI increase for regular three-yard commercial bin service, and authorize the general manager or city manager to execute the agreement and to make minor adjustments if necessary. This concludes my lengthy report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yes. The commercial CPI pickup, is that for the term of the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
One thing I'd like to add, I had mentioned this a couple of months ago. You know, there was an annual event that occurs in Garden Grove. It's the push cart derby every year, and the Boy Scouts are involved in that. And for those of you that don't know, the wheels that are used on the push carts are actually the wheels from the garbage cans. And last year, the supplier of the wheels called the West Garden Grove people and said, "You know what? We're sorry, but we can't donate those wheels this year." And I don't know if you remember, or some of you do, though. I called Dave Alt and I said, "Dave, I have a problem here." And he said, "It's taken care of." And like I mentioned recently, it's almost like the old days where a handshake was good for things. I didn't call him back. I didn't ask him what he was going to do. But there was probably 100 Cub Scouts and 200 or 300 parents and relatives and neighbors and everything that the worst thing in the world for them was that this push cart derby was not going to happen. And it was taken. And that's why I have to say that Dave Alt and Rick Colette, I mean, I respect them. I think they've given us a very good contract. But you know, it's those other side little things that, just like a big question with a lot of senior citizens is, well, you know, do we have to mail them? I mean, you know, 44 cents is 44 cents. And it sounds like a little thing, but can we still drop them off at City Hall? Well, Garden Grove Disposal is taking care of all the billing and everything, yet our residents can pay for them at City Hall and they have people coming to pick up. It's not even at our expense. So I mean, there's a lot of little things, but little things are important to other people. And to me, I mean, I have to say, the push cart derby thing wasn't really a little thing. It was something that a lot of kids would have been so disappointed. And, you know, Dave just handled it the way people handled things 30 years ago, and I want to thank him for that. And I think it's a good contract.
Move the issue.
I have a motion, a second call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's see, the next thing is, anybody have anything? I think we've covered it all.
Yeah. Do we have to vote on sanitation district and the...
Well, I think that one covered both. I think it was, Matt, do we have to vote twice or just once because we listed them both?
My understanding, when the motion was made, it was made on behalf of both. And if we can clarify that for the record, that would be fine.
Okay, it was for both. Okay, Bruce.
Well, we have Memorial Weekend coming up, and I agree with Mitchell. I think that people need to pay more attention to it. It's something that our forefathers and certainly our brothers and our fathers have fought in various wars and have given their lives in a lot of instances. I just think it's something that we should remember. There is a program at the Memorial Park on Euclid, the cemetery there, at 10 o'clock. It's done very, very well. It's there every year on Memorial Day, on Monday itself. And I will be there. I think the mayor is speaking, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's really good. You might want to stop there. They fire a couple of cannons for the Civil War enactment and then they have, I think they have, what, 35 or something like that, actually, Civil War veterans buried at the park. And they go around and talk about them, who did what and that type of thing. So something to see and something to do. Also, the evening Kiwanis will be selling corn at the festival, so you might want to stop by and get a ear of corn if you'd like, you know. And I would like to say happy anniversary to Councilmember Jones and his wife, Manny.
Thanks for reminding me.
Sure.
Oh, boy. And this is on tape, too. Are you in trouble? Oh, boy.
First off, I want to say happy anniversary to Member Broadwater and his wife Peggy, not just to Councilmember Jones. And also to Member Jones and his wife Manny. Just a reminder, the housing application is going to start July 1st to July 31st. And you need information on it, you can go online. That's gardengrovewaitinglist.com. There's a lot of people out there that will need assistance with housing. Bob Owens has always mentioned how there are some needy people out there. So Bob, this is your chance to tell those people to come and pick up an application at the city. And that's July 1st to July 31st. Also, the Garden Grove new water contract, that's a benefit to the city. And I want to thank particularly Tony Flores for taking an interest in viewing the contract and speaking with staff. It's always great to have a citizen who brings his concern to the city and to the city council. It's very helpful. I know a lot of time I'm just um, ah, but a lot of things that Tony says stick in my mind and it makes me have questions. So thanks, Tony. And also, it's not a surprise that Mr. Keith Jones have an interest in the cities because he's a resident of Garden Grove. Just let you know that. I want to thank Bee for talking about Juneteenth, and the city is proud to have a proclamation for Juneteenth. I remember the first time that ever the issue of slavery ever came to my mind was when I watched the movie Root, and it was a shocking experience for me. And as I grew, I realized that was a situation not only here in the United States, but all over the world and a lot of places in the world now is still happening. And we're blessed to be in America where we have brave people who takes us out of a lot of tragedies and that bring us to Memorial Day. When I think of Memorial Day, I think of each and every person, each and every event that makes this country what it is. And the most current event that makes me feel like an American, that makes me feel like this is my country, is the September 11th. I remember that day. I felt my heart sank. I felt a big part of me was destroyed. And that's when I realized, this is my country. So it was such an indescribable feeling, and it makes me realize that we're not invincible and we must always remember fight to protect our people, our freedom, our country, and always with the help of God. Onto, and yours was a very touching speech, Mr. Mitchell. As always, you always remember the veterans. And thanks for always reminding us of the people who sacrificed for us. Going on to the Strawberry Festival, I hope everybody will be out there. I want to thank Bruce Tran for serving on the Garden Grove Planning Commission. He's a businessman, so he brought a lot of his understanding of the needs of the business people onto the Garden Grove Planning Commission, and we appreciate that. And last but not least, please remember to buy in Garden Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Thank you. My wife knows I didn't forget our anniversary. It's our five-year anniversary and we have a trip planned coming up. But forevermore, our anniversary is a day ahead of Bruce and Peggy, so I always think of them, too. I hope everybody's going to enjoy Memorial Weekend coming up and take the time to reflect upon its meaning. And thank you, Charles. That was very touching, the story you shared. And also the Strawberry Festival and Parade coming up, that's always a blast. And then just in closing, while I've got this fresh on my mind, I spent all day yesterday and the majority of today out in Las Vegas at the ICSC convention, the Big Annual Convention that our city's been participating in for a number of years. And it's a conference, it's one of the largest conferences, actually, that happens in Las Vegas, composed of commercial, real estate developers, cities, retailers, all represented. We've cut a lot of big deals in the past at that conference. It's been very productive for the city and for the redevelopment agency. And in its heyday, it was 60,000 people. Last year, you could hear a pin drop. It was down to, I think, 20,000. And pleasantly, this year, it was up back to maybe 30,000. So a marketable increase in the attendance and in the level of enthusiasm this year compared to last year. We had some great meetings with new folks and with old folks that we've been working with. We continue to see very strong enthusiasm from the Water Park Hotel folks and McWhitty and those guys in our big project going forward on Harbor Boulevard, so we're really excited about that.
Thank you. Well, everybody said all the good stuff. You're supposed to laugh. I know, I cut him off, and I was waiting for somebody to say something. Go ahead, Andrew.
That's okay. I don't have much to say tonight. Just happy Memorial Day to everyone, and I look forward to seeing all of you out there at the Strawberry Festival. And happy anniversary to Bruce and Steve, especially Bruce. You know, I'm working on my 19th, and when I look at Bruce and people ahead of me, you know, that's a good reminder. Anniversary is something that, you know, especially, we have a lot of kids here. It's an institution. It's part of our community and our society that marriage is an institution, and we should never discount the importance of that. So there's an inspiration to be found in seeing people ahead of us, you know, making it work and continue to work at it. So that's a reminder for all of us younger folks.
Well, Garden Grove's a great city and you people out here. I'm not sure why there's so many people out here tonight. And so a few spoke, but I think it's great. I mean, I wish it was like this every council meeting or even more. I think it's wonderful because you find out a lot of things about how the city runs and sometimes you have a totally different perspective being here versus reading some things in the paper and some you don't even read. But I do, I think that Juneteenth is a very important thing, and I like Bee Jones, and I'm happy that she brought it forward because we were able to give her the resolution. And she's been very active in the community for many, many, many years, and she's on one of our commissions. The Strawberry Festival is coming up. I think next year, I'm going to challenge, it's too late now, but I'm going to challenge Mr. Broadwater, and maybe we'll get a couple of dunk tanks, and we'll both be in them, side by side, and see who gets dunked the most.
I accept the challenge.
Okay, all right, then write it down. We'll do it next year. Well, we may do that. We may auction. You know, we may auction. That's not a bad idea, Jimmy. Anyway, the Strawberry Festival is a great event. Please come and spend a lot of money because we can always use it. I want to compliment Dina. I was at her wedding reception a few days ago. And Dina and Joseph, congratulations, many, many best wishes, and we're very happy for you. Yes, at the Magnolia Cemetery, there will be that ceremony this weekend, and I've been very honored. I've been a guest speaker for about 10 or 11 years. And as Bruce mentioned, I forget the number of soldiers, Civil War veterans, that are buried there. But there's a gentleman named Gillette, Mr. Gillette, that does a tour every time, and he knows everything about these people. And he knows it by heart. He doesn't even have to refer to books or anything. But it really, it gives you a different insight when you look at someone and think, gee my God, what war did they fight in and how old were they? And you look at the tombstones, and they have them pretty well cleaned up. So you should get to that. It's on Magnolia, south of Chapman. I guess, I want to, yes, I do want to wish happy anniversary to Bruce and Peggy and happy anniversary to Steve and Manny. And I'm going to adjourn the meeting in the honor of Ed Freeman, a Vietnam War hero. Thank you, and we'll have our next meeting Tuesday, June 8th at 5:30 PM here. Thank you.